Hi, everyone. Welcome to April, no, sorry, May 13th, meeting of the Dover School Committee. My name is Jeff Cassidy and I call this meeting to order at 6:30. We're holding this open meeting at the Dover Sherburne Middle School Library. We're also live streaming through DSC TV and we're also recording this meeting for future viewing. First on our agenda, we have community comments. We've provided a Zoom link for those who cannot attend in person. Do we have any community comments either on Zoom or in person? No? Okay. Seeing none, we can move on to next order of business, which is our superintendent's comments.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just have a short list because we've been together recently with a longer list of updates and then I'm happy to take any questions or feedback you might have beyond this list. Thank you to both the towns of Dover and Sherburne for voting in favor of the turf fields for the region. In Dover, it was a sweeping 97% vote in support, which was excellent, and Sherburne, a 69% vote, which is just over what we needed. Sherburne is voting today, hopefully in favor of being debt excluded, and then Dover does not need to vote, so we'll have hopefully good news up for today. Following up on the bus accident, which was very unfortunate, we are very lucky that our middle school student was okay. As Dawn helped me investigate the situation with the bus company and the police, it seems that yes, the stop sign and the red lights did go out and the red light started flashing. That's automatic. When the door opens, it happens no matter what, so it's not a second thing that a human needs to do, it just happens. Unfortunately, the car behind them just decided it needed to pass and attempted to pass, so it was not human error on our part, but the driver and they took responsibility. But in the meantime, Dawn was great and followed up with the bus company, just to reiterate our expectations for all bus drivers, that they stop at every bus stop and that they hug the yellow line whenever students are expected to cross two lanes. We can't cross the yellow line even though we're a school bus, it's still illegal, so we'll get as close as we can and continue to work with police and the bus company if there's any additional measures that we can take to make sure our students are safe.
Sorry, explain that one more time. You can't hug, you hug which yellow line?
So we used to ask and hope that our school buses, if the students were going to have to cross in front of the school bus and then over a lane to get where they were going, that they would kind of swing into the other lane as a second visual of like, hey.
In the middle of the road.
Yeah.
And you cannot do that.
You cannot go over the yellow line.
If you get signed in for that. So that was a conversation we had when I was talking to the bus driver, like, you really can't do that, but we hug, so they get almost at the yellow line, but you can't.
That's how bus drivers are trained.
Yeah. And it's really on the, on the busier streets. This was on 109, on Center Street. So any of the busier streets where the routes don't, aren't conducive to try to do it on the right side of where they get off, they have to cross, that's what they do.
Is there any conversation between bus drivers and kids about like when to go? Because I, I think about that often too, of like the other side, it's obvious when you're going over.
Yeah, so you can, right, so you can see if the traffic is coming on, right? He didn't know the, the car's going around him.
Oh, the car went around.
So, because I mean, we sort of first heard it, we thought it was.
Oncoming.
Oncoming, and it wasn't.
But then we tried to do a reenactment of the details that we knew and like, how is that possible that the child's foot would have gotten nicked if they were, if they were coming from the front? They had to come from the back and then we found out that to be true.
It's very lucky that it was only a foot. I mean, that could have been awful. Was it, was anything broken, the foot?
No, they, they refused medical treatment at first. Mom was there and then they did follow up the next day and everything was fine.
Kids are so resilient.
Yeah.
Do we, that was obviously a very close near miss and I was just curious, is there mandatory reporting back to the school whenever anything like that happens? Let's say a car doesn't follow the directions and passes, but it's not a near miss, do we have visibility into that as a school district?
It's a good question.
I think that is a good question. I think the bus driver will report it back to dispatch if something like that happened and our dispatch manager usually calls and lets us know because the kids know, right? Kids usually see it and so they also, they all usually want to make us aware as well. So I think they took this opportunity, just as our kids are sort of getting itchy, to sit down with all their bus drivers and all their districts and do just another safety, we're here, let's get over the finish line. So they sat down with all the drivers and just went over safety and like, you know, let's keep our diligence, watch for, you know, oncoming traffic and such and, you know, don't slack.
Sure.
Do everything by the book right now. So I think it was, it was one of those things that was actually a good opportunity. Luckily, no one was hurt, but it was an opportunity to put all the bus drivers together and sit down and just get us, you know, get us ready to do the 17th and everyone just sort of like refocused.
Yeah, I'm curious, the reason in my mind, I'm thinking if there's areas where there's, the bus drivers are experiencing more challenges with drivers not obeying the stop signs, which it sounds like was the main cause here, whether we need to engage with Dover Police or something else to monitor those areas and maybe reinforce better behavior by our drivers or some other stuffs.
Traffic study or something.
Right, yeah, exactly like that. So, but it would only be worthwhile if this, if it happens repeatedly versus a one-off, right? So that's why I asked about.
Yeah, we're not aware of anything and I'm sure our students would let us know.
Gotcha.
Our students are our best reporters.
Usually our first reporters, yes.
Yes, yes, I don't doubt that.
But we can also follow up with Marsha, our contact with the bus company and just remind her that we're always open to feedback and if there are patterns to let us know.
Perfect.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for those of you who are able to join us for our legal workshop, I think, two Wednesdays ago. We were not able to record it. We do have notes though and very detailed slides that we'll be following up with. I know there is further interest in having someone come and talk about civil rights. Thank you, Martha, for your recommendation. So we're following up with your person as well as the person that we've been working with to see kind of what makes sense moving forward and I'll work with the chairs to make that decision and then get it on the calendar.
Appreciate it.
Yep, of course. And then lastly, usually at this meeting in May, we review the first read of updates to the student handbook. However, we have booked out times this summer with all four principals to sit down with us and do a complete overhaul of the handbooks, both to make sure that the language is reflective of all the new policies that you've approved recently, that there's other tweaks in languages that we need, maybe need to change, but also some of our handbooks, not necessarily Chicgrane, but within the district, some of them have just had, you know, update after update after update and could just use a lot of clean reformatting. So we'd ideally love to have a K to five joint manual and a six through 12 joint manual, so that's the goal. Whether we get there in one year or not, we'll make, we'll make that the ultimate goal, but we certainly hope to have something prettier and more user-friendly and thorough and comprehensive to you by August for our first and quick second read.
Are you using any sort of a consulting service? I know it's been invaluable for the Policies Subcommittee.
It's not a bad idea, but I can look into see if anybody's available, yeah.
It helps you with your best practices too, that on a day-to-day basis, we wouldn't be aware of.
Yep. What we have done is, is done a pretty comprehensive search of other comparable districts that are larger and have more positions, like they have their own attorneys on staff and their own communications people on staff that do design and all those things. And we've taken a few of them, we're hoping to adopt many of their ideas. We would never steal anything, but we might adopt some ideas and start from there, but that's another angle that we can certainly explore. Yep. And that's all I have. I don't know if you have updates or if you wanted to touch on the technology use at the elementary level?
Yes. Says ask to provide some information about how technology is being used at the elementary level of Chicgrane, specifically around screen time at elementary levels. So I, first off, was trying to figure out like, how are we currently using screens in our classrooms? For Reveal Math, one of the things that is great about it is it has online exit tickets. So some students, and this is mostly in third, fourth, and fifth grade, are jumping on Chromebook at the end of their math lesson to fill out the exit ticket. The nice part about doing the online one versus the paper one is that Reveal Online will sort based on the students' responses and recommend groupings for the next day for the teacher. So students that are doing the online exit tickets are spending kind of not more than five minutes, there's really just quick, usually one or two problems to check for understanding. Students are using iXL for math practice and for our diagnostics tests, the timeline that varies depending on the time of the year. So usually at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year, where we're trying to kind of merge on some data points, that's when you'll see a little bit more use of that. In kindergarten and in the earlier grades that use iPads, they're using them for some of the basic skills. So in kindergarten, they're using the iPads to learn how to write letters, so they can trace on the screen and kind of have that tactile sense. Some of our earlier grades came one or using a program called Lexia, which is for reading, so has them interact with, you know, really interesting, high-engaging texts and is also tracking some data on how the students are doing in terms of their reading and their fluency. In second through fifth grade, students are using screens for a program called Math Fact Lab, so that's kind of an add-on from our Reveal Math program, which is building fact fluency. So that was some of the things that we had talked about at some point during this year, about, you know, we want this conceptual understanding through math, but at the same time, some of that kind of automatic facts is important as well, especially as you get to some of the older grades. Students are using that in grades two through five, probably about 10 minutes, two to three times a week. They're also using it for some math games as well. Third, fourth, and fifth graders are using Chromebooks specifically when they're working on writing assignments. Some of it is just gaining familiarity with Google Documents, because they're going to be using that a lot in middle school and high school. Some of it is practicing for MCAS, so that by the time students get to the online MCAS test, they're familiar and comfortable with typing and with all the features of the program. So I was in one classroom before the MCAS, before the ELA MCAS, and the teacher had them in front of the Chromebooks and they were looking at the sample MCAS screen, because it gives you all these tools on the ELA where you can highlight, you can change the screen background, so, you know, maybe the colors stand out to you and makes it easier to read. So they're having students practice kind of what are the settings that work best for them. Third grade does Typing Club two times a week for 20 minutes, so that's just learning how to type and keyboarding skills. And in fifth grade, when students are doing research units, they're often using the Chromebooks, both in social studies, science, and in ELA time to research, learn how to use some of our online databases. And then one of the final assessments for that is putting together a slideshow based on their research, so that's when you might see students on the screens a little bit more. Overall, in talking to Dr. Reineman, the goal is not have students in front of a screen for more than an hour a day, except there are times when certain units, it's just going to be heavier than others. And there's a strange confluence of things where you're getting ready for the math MCAS and you're working on your American Revolution research project. So I think there are probably periods during the year where it seems probably more screen-heavy than is probably representative for the whole year. As always, we kind of trust our teachers as the experts to figure out how much, find that balance of utilizing all the online tools and all the Chromebook tools and the iPad tools. But as usual, if you have a specific concern, it's always good to talk to the teacher first and then talk to Dr. Reineman and Mr. Carnes. One other thing I'll mention is as we are at the beginning of our ELA program review, one of the things that the committee has prioritized, it's something very important, is making sure regardless of what program or curriculum we choose, that we are prioritizing having physical books in front of students. Because some of these new ELA programs actually do have a lot of screen time and are very based on the computer, so we, if it turns out we're going to be looking for a new program, we've said that we want students to have those physical print books, magazines, other things in front of them. So that's something that we can put to the top of the list that has been important for the program that we have. That's kind of my mini-report and I'm happy to take any questions or concerns people might have.
Thank you, Danny. Questions?
I guess just like what, as leaders of the schools, like what's your overall like take on where technology sits, where technology should sit at the elementary level and how it should be used? Like what's your sort of vision and goals for the use of technology?
I mean, I think a lot of it is when we think about the pretty authentic tasks for our students, when we're assessing them, you know, wanting them to do things that they might have to do in the real world someday is tapping into this technology where it's appropriate. So for example, like putting together a slideshow, because in the real world, you're most likely going to have to do public presentations, that's good practice and learning how to put the slides together, collaborate, especially with Google Docs and Google Slides, where you can have more than one student on at the same time editing and collaborating. They're not just for the nice like text and pictures, but it's actually a collaboration tool and a means for communication. And I think that, you know, we've talked about technology since the SAMR model came out a long time ago about how you're not just using technology for technology's sake, but you're really using it to augment and to improve instruction. So if there are places where going to an online database to look at different sources is going to be helpful, then I think teachers want to use that, but if they have the trade books in their classroom where students can be looking at them, then I think that for a lot of students, it's easier to have that physical copy in front of them, excuse you a whole unit, just on recognizing text features as part of an informational text in the classroom. So it's really just not looking at having technology, not looking at having a screen just for the sake of it being there or because it's cool, but because somehow it is going to do something that we can't do on paper and pencil, like the Reveal exit tickets, for example, it takes the teacher much longer to sort through each of the exit tickets and to put the students into groups. Or, you know, if it's something that can be done to elevate a lesson. So the example that I gave maybe a couple meetings ago of using the iPads and the mini robots and programming them, you know, that's an opportunity that you couldn't do really with kind of physical materials. And those are discussions that, you know, we should be and will be continuing to have. I think some of our professional development next year is going to be around technology in the classroom. I don't know if we've visited a lot besides AI, you know, this huge influx of technology when COVID happened and looking at all these online tools, and I think it's time next year to begin to revisit that and to see what tools people are using, the purpose that they're using them for, and continuing to think about, you know, what makes the most sense in alignment with our nine best practices as well. So to kind of more succinctly answer your question, I think that we are over in the next year going to be trying to align that technology use with the nine best practices in a more cohesive way.
And I think the elementary level, it's, you know, our teachers and leaders are very thoughtful about the use of technology. And now that I've had children go all the way up to the high school and I'm starting to visit colleges and seeing what their libraries look like and how they've shrunk in size because you don't need as many tactile books, right? I think that at the elementary level, the educators really value, you know, having the books to actually read, but also realizing that students may need to start exploring what it's like to read on a, you know, a Kindle or a Chromebook, listening to books on tape or audiobooks, because they're going to start having those options as they move through and as they learn who they are as a reader, they're going to be, you know, connecting with, this works best for me and start making those independent decisions. But I do think at the elementary level, they really start with the foundational, you know, we're going to write things out and we're going to do brainstorming for writing and we're going to go through that process because it helps you learn the writing process or it helps you read, learn the reading process, but then slowly kind of prepares them for the next level and then they progress.
Yeah, I like the idea of additional training for our educators because it is definitely, you can't avoid technology, right? And our students are exposed to it on a routine basis, establishing some fundamental best practices, hygiene, understanding, you know, teaching our students when it's age-appropriate how to navigate the different resources, they're so vital. As someone who hires folks straight out of college and mentoring high school students in another district, the, the amount of dependency that I'm seeing on AI, automatic writings tools and not being able to fact-check, not being able to identify what sources you can rely on versus other ones, of course, it's just beginning steps at the elementary school level, but understanding how to best prepare our students as they progress on their technology journey, I think, makes a lot of sense. So I appreciate you're getting additional, you know, training for our educators.
I think in the elementary level too, I, full disclosure, I work for a net tech company, not one that Danny just mentioned, but one of the things that I've seen educators use is to help engage kids that are otherwise disengaged. So like some of the programs we talked about, they have some games associated with them, so it's, teachers are able to motivate a kid because they want to, you know, work on that, on that game, but in order to work on that game, they have to answer a math question and then they realize, if you just give them a worksheet, they're not maybe giving their best effort, certain kids. And so if you give them some other motivational tool, like, again, I think our teachers are great and they have the autonomy and discretion to use them, but they can be used to motivate especially different styles of learning too, from my perspective.
And I think part of the conversation too, in additional to, in addition to providing additional support and professional development for our teachers, but it, circling back to Brandon Hall, our new Director of Educational Technology, I mean, he's done a lot of work in one year, but one of the things that he's been really coaching, especially the middle and high school teachers on, is the use of AI. And our teachers have been really thinking about, you know, the red, yellow, green model of like, when you can never use AI, when you can use it sometimes for brainstorming or for cleanup, and then when you can go all out it. And again, having kids that are at the higher end of the system, it's interesting to see when they are and aren't allowed to use AI. So I, again, am hopeful that we're providing both scales of when to use AI and when to know what's factual versus you have to be able to do this by yourself still, sorry. So my son just turned in his junior history position paper, which was 10 pages, and it was a red light, no AI ever. And he was good, he stuck to it, I was proud of him. He wouldn't, but, you know, so yes, the balance is important.
It's emerging technology and even, you know, in the professional services, we're trying to figure out the run rules, right? So it's not clearly established for adults, it's going to be much harder to make those clear guidelines for our students, but, you know, it's technology, it's part of our life, you have to figure out a way to leverage it in a way that's helping our students progress and be the best that they can be and not as a crutch, which I think a lot of parents are concerned about.
Yep, absolutely.
I think one of the other things that I've heard from parents, there's just a few examples, is, you know, my kids that have been allowed access to things that potentially they shouldn't be allowed access to during school, so just making sure that as maybe it's part of the professional development, that there are clear parameters and the clear parameters are explained well to parents, what the safety and security and access is at school. Like your computer will shut down if you go onto this website or whatever it is, but I don't think it's been made clear to some parents, based on the feedback that I've gotten this year, on sort of the parameters for technology use and the parameters for which kids are allowed access to, you know, the internet and other open sources.
Do you have specific examples? Because I've actually seen, like their Chromebooks are pretty locked down with the, like, we have a lot of cybersecurity.
They're locked down even for us, like we.
Yeah, if you're on the network, if you're on the network.
So like, one example that was, again, this is secondhand, so I don't know, I don't know, it was not my child. But when the war broke out in Gaza, that there was able, they were able to see like videos of bombings during the school hours and that was shocking for a Jewish family. So I don't know how they got access to that, but something like that.
It's probably helpful for the technology director, just how some of the examples.
I will share and I won't, I won't identify, obviously, the nature of the student, but I, I do know firsthand that the teachers are very sensitive to it, particularly in the elementary school, and will report even like inappropriate internet searches that they become aware of, right?
Yeah, my daughter's had that.
Right?
She was going messy during class and they picked her up.
I will not give the exact example. Protect the innocent, but yeah, there are searches that the children try to do and the teachers are pretty prompt at it and notify the parents when that is taking place. So I mean, kudos that there is obviously some hygiene there.
Some parameters, but I think the awareness, like I was, it was great to hear that, but I think that to understand it comprehensively, to say, if your kid goes on and does things that they're not supposed to be doing, we will pick it up through this service. Or if you go onto this website, it will lock down. Like really under, having the parents understand why they're on the computers, what their use cases are and what they can and cannot have access to would be really helpful. As we all try to figure out and navigate, you know, social media and computers at home and, you know, what's best for our kids, it's complicated.
And maybe with the new DT Director position that we have for the region, once they get past the nuts and bolts of establishing a good framework for our students, maybe some of those guides and reports out to our parents on our website might be helpful and, you know.
Yeah, it could be a good like segment, additional segment to the social media, like if we were to do a second segment for next year, this could be a great, really helpful, I don't know, additional, additional component to, to the social media group.
And our resource officer is still doing like fifth grade, like online safety and stuff, right? That's still happening.
Yes, they do also come into the middle school and do some safety stuff about online. We had the social media event with some of our middle school educators and administrators and our two SROs, and they just finished editing the recording, so I'll get that out to everybody. But one of the topics that did come up is, you know, if we're asking parents to help monitor at home, how did we monitor at school? So sharing these resources would be helpful, but when, I love the parents' reactions when, what is it called, when the teachers, the teachers on their laptop or on their desktop can see all 22 computer screens on their screen and if they see somebody like doing a Google search or playing a game that they shouldn't, they can zap it and then the kid's sitting there and it's like, it's free and it's just like, I see you.
Yeah, I think, I think that awareness would, would go a long way to reassure the parents, like it, you're not doing it unless you get credit for it, right? So.
Yeah.
And the other thing too, I know you, that this district is doing a great job of bringing content to the parents and helping educate us on all the, the issues. If at any point we're able to get just like quick vignettes, like, you know, five-minute high, high-level topic summaries that we can post on our website, so it's just in time accessible information for those parents who are, you know, crazy busy, can't go to the, you know, hour-long session.
And have it in one place.
Yeah, just, just, again, I, I now I'm realizing I need to just stop giving so many suggestions because you're getting a huge student. I don't need to do that, it's just.
It'd be part of our five-year strategic plan.
Yeah, something to think about, it's not a mandate, but.
No, good, good ideas, thank you.
If one more idea slash comment, and one of this came from an, listening to a recording by a New York Times columnist who had done a technology sort of scan nationwide. It was really interesting with Emily Oster, who's an economist from Brown and kind of specialist in children and children growing up. And one of the things, the findings of the study, and I'm not saying it's happening here, but was the variability not only across the United States, but within schools. Like some teachers used it a ton, technology a ton, and some used it very little. So the experience is very dependent upon like the age and the type of teacher they had and their comfortability with the different technology. So I'm, I don't know what it's like, like the variability that you described or kind of grade-based, but I'm also just wondering if it's teacher-based too and if there is some, sort of some congruity amongst, or standards amongst classes that could be looked at, to say like, this is the expectation for each grade level, this is how kind of our cap is an hour and sort of kind of standards for, for, for parents and teachers to kind of go by.
I'll say one thing about that. I worry about, I think general guidelines are good. I think if we get too prescriptive, because we have amazing teachers. Some teachers are really good using some of the technologies and some are really good using analog. And I think if you start to give prescriptions, you take away some of the autonomy. So definitely encourage some use cases and make sure we're not going overboard in certain areas, but any kind of hard and fast rule or like forcing somebody who's really good at analog to say, hey, actually you need to start using a lot more digital tools and vice versa. I think you're just kind of handicapping what makes some of our teachers really good. Like they're all, they all have their different skills and we should be monitoring and make sure, I mean, I know you guys are in classrooms regularly, Dr. Reineman's in classrooms regularly, but yeah, I'd be careful to like have hard deadline, a hard.
Maybe guardrails.
Guardrails is a probably.
Maybe guardrails would be the right.
Guardrails are better, because I have, in my work, I've been in lots of classrooms and some use it really well and some you're like, I wish you weren't using this right now.
Well, that's, that's my point, is that if there's guardrails, then, then we can be pretty sure that, you know, it's being used well, if not great, in a lot, in every classroom.
Yeah.
Yep, good suggestions, so thank you for bringing this up as a topic.
All right. Is there anything else from your report, Danny, or that was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions or feedback in general?
Thank you.
No, thank you for that, Danny. That was really helpful.
Yeah.
Happy to.
All right. So moving on, we didn't ask you how much any of these cost, but the next thing is financial reports.
I think they're all free. Yeah, exactly. You have your monthly warrant report, which is a little longer since we did not meet in April, so you're seeing everything approved since your March meeting. And if you ever have any questions on, but you can see all the different funds that we hit as we process payables in April.
Your monthly report, actually there's, we're holding study. So I think the biggest, if you look at what we've said over the months, the biggest impact we had this year was the integration of the Connections Program and the staffing and the additional spend services that we weren't, we weren't sure how to budget for. So that is where I think you see variances. And we are fortunate that we had budgeted for enough EAs and some of the EAs for Connections ended up being assigned to.
And we are fortunate that we had um budgeted for enough EAs and some of the EAs for connections ended up being assigned to some of our our Sherburne students who were tuitioning in. So that's where we made that adjustment and you see some of that savings for EAs actually helped cover some of the specialist costs. So at the end of the day, we're running like right at um budget for both salaries and operating expense. Knowing that your operating expense, we're still expending um as we progress through the year. Not everything's encumbered as far as like, you know, things you need for end year, end of the year and such, but we're looking good.
That's a, that's a huge kudos though to, to the administration as a whole, because that, that was an uncertainty that could have gone very differently. So appreciate all the hard work that went into it.
Yeah, yeah, and so I think we had enough of an insight so that we incorporated majority of that into your fiscal year 26 budget. As you know, there were some adds for some of the related services. And uh, we'll, we'll just see what else happens since we, you know, did your budget back and um, you know, sort of finalized it in March. But I feel pretty good that we're at a, a good place for starting fiscal year 26. At a district, keep in mind, we are seeing a large variance, um, but it's really being driven by the one large case that we anticipated had aging out and didn't. And so um, it's, it's not as um volatile as it appears if you pull out that one case. And obviously we, we have cases or placements that um changed during the year, move-ins and such. So um, you know, that is what you're seeing this year, but we're fortunate that you have a million two of circuit breaker to fall back on. So we are still operating within our budget, it's just the town's going to have less turn back from that um circuit breaker and that's something that they're aware of and something that we talked about extensively during the budgeting process, given um some of the things we already knew were playing out in fiscal year 26.
And you've updated us routinely, so thank you for that.
Yes. Um, and then I just switching over to fiscal year 26, as Beth said, our um budgets were approved. There are actually no hold on any of the budgets at the Dover town meeting. And um at the chickering level, the um requested capital project of the remaining flooring projects was approved. Um, and so just to refresh your memory, that's the whole admin wing, the whole um office there, the teacher's lounge and the teacher's workroom, um, the art room and special ed room upstairs. Um, and we'll be doing some of the stairwell. So at the end of April, I mean, I'm sorry, April of August, um, I don't think there'll be any original floors still in um that building that are um tiled, you know, BCT for carpentry. Cause even the library's already been changed over.
That's right.
At one point in our, in our tenure here. So that will be exciting to get rid of all the need to um strip and wax. So freeze up our, our summer guys to do some more detailing and some other um nice to, nice to do's um in the building.
Do you have questions about the financial report?
Is this the time where we can talk about? So, yes. So one other sort of large item that has come up is um teacher numbers and teacher class size. I think throughout the years, throughout the year, what I have heard from parents most and, and some teachers as well is that um there's a lot of kids in certain classrooms and that certain classrooms feel like they are, there's a lot of kids to be effective. And that um the kids in the class that either, whether they're new kids or just, they need more, they need more from their teachers. And it's been hard to sort of continue with the lesson plans and the expectations for the year, given the number of kids and the types, type of kids in the class. And there's different examples throughout the year. So I just wanted to open it up and then I, I, to the conversation about the band, the current band.
You mean uh, the class size.
Class size, yep, band. And um, yeah, open it up for a conversation about class size and or support, more support for teachers in the classroom for next year. And that pertains to the budget, obviously, so I want, we wanted to sort of start the conversation now. Because it would have an impact on the budget for next year.
And, and the current um target classroom size that the committee has historically relied on is 17 to 22?
Yeah, and I think right now most of the classroom, classrooms are more than 17. Like it airs on the larger classroom size.
But no one's exceeding the 22?
No one is exceeding the 22, no. And I guess the other thing I'll just add, because I, we, we brought this up in the school advisory committee meeting too. And with the feedback that I got from teachers and the chickering leadership is that what was once, let's say 18 kids in a classroom, no longer feels like 18 kids in a classroom. And we were growing up per se, like 18 kids in a classroom now, everything is more individualized, everything is more, you know, there's 19% of our kids are on IEPs. There's just more attention that needs to get paid to each kid. Plus there's not a lot of classic, um classroom AEs, EAs.
And am I correct that it's just kindergarten, every class has an assigned EA and then after that they split?
They're shared, they're shared, so.
I, I've heard a lot about class size too, and I, I definitely have experienced it. So my son is in kindergarten, he's in a class of 21. When I'm in there for curriculum enrichment or when I'm helping the library, it is bonkers. I mean, they're kindergartners and so yes, they have an assigned EA, but she is very helpful with making sure they wash their hands, making sure that, you know, someone isn't wandering off. I get the, when these kids are five and six, it's, it's not really, I mean, I don't want to diminish anyone, but it's, it's more like a body to help these little bodies than it is an educational assistant. So yeah, I would love to know just what the process is around changing that band, if that's even something that we, you know. So that was decided, I would assume by school committee at some point, that number?
It is, because it's, it's actually in your, it's in the school.
Okay. That's why I, I knew the number, I'm pretty confident.
Yeah, it's in the policy.
That's how Dawn does the budgeting.
Totally, you know, it's in the policy as such, so.
I can't remember if we brought it forward yet.
It's, it's in review.
It's in review now, okay.
Yeah, and I guess one more anecdote from the, I thought the conversation we had with the teachers was great, was just that their, the teachers, as part of the school advisory committee said that the, and you guys would know this too, but that the, if the classroom size were smaller, that like the fundamental approach to the year and the curriculum and what could get done in the classroom just changes. Like the difference between 22 and 20, or 21 kids with some more challenging kids in a classroom is different than having, let's say, 16 kids in a classroom and, you know, one or two teachers. I'm not saying that 16 is the right number, I'm just saying that, you know, class size, they were saying matters and it feels like a lot for them right now.
This sounds ripe for a agenda item for another meeting.
Yeah.
And because we have a unified policy, I'd recommend that it be at a joint committee meeting.
Well, it's not a unified policy.
It's not, yeah.
No, because this, that's Dover's only policy, Sherburne's is different, Sherburne's is 18 to 23.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's.
Should it be?
Like should.
Well, yes, because the towns pay for their.
Different town budgets.
Yeah. Oh, but it used to be, so during my tenure here, Sherburne actually changed theirs, because it used to be 18 to 23, K to three and 23 to 25, four to five. And so their desire was to be closer to what Chickering had. And so that compromise was to take away, uh, make the 18 to 23 cover K through five and not just the lower grades. So that probably in the last seven years or so, they did make that change.
It would be interesting to see historically how class size has changed over the years. And, and the reason why, before we, like, I feel like this is ripe for a, an agenda item with some pre-work, right?
Totally, I agree. I'd love to know what other, I mean, it'd be interesting, we could be the leaders in, in, in change, but it would be interesting to know comparatively across like.
Other, other towns too. And we may resolve to go, stay, keep, stay the course, right? And I, it doesn't feel like this is something that we can change in time for the 26 budget, just to set expectations.
Yeah.
But I, you know, I will share, having grown up in the Newton Public School systems, I had classes of 30 students, right?
And if you go to Boston, it will be.
Right, so like, you know, it's still high performing, school systems can do it differently. Um, but it's good for us to be listening to both our teachers and our parents.
Sure, yeah, no, I, I agree with that.
And I think as we do with many things, you know, currently we're wrapping up our instructional leadership study um about, you know, the role of PLC, curriculum leader, superintendent chairs, um, and everybody who supports studying in the district. And we've looked at it from three angles, which is what, what's the feedback from the people who live it day to day in the schools in Dover Sherburne? What are our comparable districts doing that we might learn from them and what does the research say? The research will tell you, um, and Denny and I were just looking at this in anticipation of this coming up, that the impact of class size on actual learning is minimal.
Oh, so yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, it's like a point two something, whereas there's other factors like collective teacher efficacy is 1.57, self-reported grades, 1.33. So I think we need to look at all aspects. To acknowledge the fact that our, our student population has changed and their needs have changed and teachers are being asked to do more every day.
Right.
Yes, we need to look at that. We should look at what other districts are doing, which anecdotally through negotiations and now that the educational assistants are, are part of a, a, a union, we are, we have twice as many EAs as most districts that we can pair ourselves to, if not more.
That's amazing.
Right.
And so I think we should look at all aspects of that and we should pair for that.
And query whether or not EAs are the right, right levels of, versus, because I know it's so hard for us to, to hire and retain EAs, particularly because it's usually a stepping stone, right, in Massachusetts, so. Yeah, this is, this would be an interesting conversation.
Look at the number of specialized programs we now have in special education. The number of, you know, special educators, OTs, PTs, SLPs, those have all.
Grown too.
So it's where we're putting our money and expertise. So it's a huge puzzle, so thank you for the idea of putting it as an agenda item, because I think there's a lot to bring to the table.
I think that that's right too, and I was also thinking like, it, it might be teachers, it might be educational assistants and it might be like, I know, I know in other school disparate schools, they have, you know, like seniors come to classrooms as part of their senior study to just help out. Like could we have some sort of rotational support? I mean, again, I'm just getting creative, but like there could be other options to think about. If let's say the budget doesn't allow for next year, could we have, you know, I don't know. Again, some other group of kids that are interested in education come and help out our teachers in areas that they need help with.
But let's, let's make sure we first identify what the problem statement is.
Yeah, totally, totally, maybe there is.
Corporate speak.
But I, I.
Yeah, I agree with you.
And I think just um, you know, looking, because when I was on FLESS, and I know that was like many years ago, but one thing that we did is we went to different schools that already had FLESS. And one thing we did as school committee members, because there were several of us, we count how many students were in the classrooms. And I think that we realized that we were fortunate here that the town supported 17 to 22, because you're not going to see that range in most of your other districts. So I, just as, we're always so appreciative to the towns to allow us to still maintain the 17 to 22, because there are times where we could probably go down a section, but we tend to go on the low end. And so.
Try to keep the numbers lower.
Yeah, so there, there is that financial push and what's the best use of, of resources. And I think um at the best point, I think we've always felt that class size was not, sometimes didn't have the determining factor that you thought you were going to get by having it lower. And, and I would say looking at like next year, most of yours are all like below 20. Like anticipated, there might be one grade that had, we had switched around for kindergarten, but we'll have all those numbers for you in June, just to say this is where we think we're sitting right now, so if you can see.
And if you can develop your problem statement, maybe between now and then, or even between now and September, then we can dig in and try to find the research to help us, you know, sift through what possible solutions might be.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you for what's happened, coming open.
Do we have all the teacher spots filled? Is it over for now? We're hiring one.
Yeah, that was still a little bit.
Still looking for the best of the best.
Yeah, good. People like to come here.
Position.
Fifth grade. It's fun, I love sitting in interviews.
And they can do model lessons and just, yeah.
You want to know all about persuasive writing now?
That's great.
All right. Any other questions on the financial section?
No, thank you, Donna, as always.
Okay. So we have kind of had that as a bit of a discussion, but we didn't have other discussion items. There were no action items from last time. And next up would be our consent items, uh, which all we do have is approval of the minutes from the March sixth meeting. So um, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes, or actually is there any discussion or question? Okay, then can I have a motion?
Go ahead, sit for a motion.
Thank you.
Actually, hold a second.
Thank you, I see, uh, all in favor? All right, passing unanimously. In your packet, we do also have um a number of informational items. Don't know that I need to read all of them to you, I think you can read these. But if there are any, if you did a pre-read, if you have any questions or comments, uh, now's the moment.
If you want me to just conceptually give you the overview, so as you know, we belong to the tech and the accept collaborative and they are due to give each of their member districts a quarter early report, so you have a quarterly report from both. You have the FY 26 approved budget for the tech collaborative in Walpole. The accept collaborative, the budget has been approved, we've had a changeover though, the executive director stepped down. We have an interim in place and are currently searching for a new director. So the beautiful package is not yet ready for you, but the budget's been approved and ready to go. Um, and as you know, the tech collaborative has invited Sharon Public Schools and King Philharmonic to join. So now the new agreement that states that goes into effect July 1st.
Thank you. Any items at the moment that we want to add to the June 3rd meeting?
There's already an exciting highlight, so you all will start your meeting at 5:30, Sherburne will start there at, at 6:00. While you're here together, Denny and the literacy coaches will give you an update on the literacy review. And then when he's done, you will adjourn and Sherburne will keep going with their meeting.
Well.
So only a 29.9 minutes.
All right.
Try to be efficient.
And that will be the first meeting that there is a new, new member as well. So because we have an election between now and then. And.
Next month.
Tuesday.
19th.
No, it's Monday.
Monday.
Isn't it Monday?
Service Tuesday today.
Yeah, the 19th.
Okay, all right, I would have, thank you for that.
You would have seen everybody.
Yeah, eventually. All right, well with that, we'd like to thank our two, well, leaving members for now. Perspective, perspective members perhaps to say, um, I feel like we've gone through a lot more than two years together. But you both have done such a tremendous job on this committee, really. It's been such a pleasure to get to know both of you and work with both of you. Goldie, I feel like in reflecting back, I feel like you are like the unsung hero. That's not the correct, the exact word, but you've done so many challenging things for us that have taken so much time and effort and you've just done it with empathy and grace. And it's just, you're, you're, you've been such an amazing asset.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, it's been such a pleasure. I know that you work so hard for this, for the kids and for this committee and we just can't thank enough, you enough. So we really hope that you continue to join us next year in your leadership. We just appreciate you um so much. And Jeff, I think that you're, know this last year, you've just done such a great job leading the ship and um keeping us aligned and being very open to all of our ideas and comments and just being a very thoughtful, even keeled leader. Um, and so we're going to miss you tremendously.
Thank you.
But really, really happy that you're staying on for the greater good of the school. Um, and I think your experience and knowledge from the last three years as a Dover representative will serve the middle school and the high school really, really well. So thank you, we'll miss you and we hope that Goldie stays on.
Thank you, I will, I'll be missed being part of this group, but hopefully look forward to seeing you at the, the joint meetings. It's been a definitely a pleasure working with all of you. Everybody brings really good ideas and we have enough differences that we bring a lot of different perspectives to the group. Thank you all.
Thank you all, it's been such a pleasure working with you all over the past years and it was an amazing experience for me and I hope I stay for more terms. And um, I think this is such an amazing group. We have differences, but we communicate, we have amazing open dialogue about challenging topics. And we all have kids' future and our community in mind and I learned, I've learned a lot from every one of you, thank you.
We appreciate you as well and all of the ideas and support that you brought to um the schools and, and to impact kids day to day, but also, you know, the thoughtful questions that you ask and holding us accountable to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for our students and our taxpayers. We're hopeful to see you sitting at this table again soon. But um, in the meantime, since you are leaving officially, the district of Dover, we will thank you to Jeff.
Thank you very much.
And um, we're hoping that you continue on your district, so no gifts this year.